Especially spring. It's just track season is the most miserable season there is. It starts next week. I do not look forward to it. Track should not start until like mid-April.
You're right.
There's stuff here.
Yeah. Oh, it's terrible.
And it's so cold like for the evening games and the older boys always get up at seven o'clock and we're like frightened. I bought one of the chairs with the um the battery you can hook up and it heats it up. But then the kids use that, so it's so depressing.
Oh, Michael.
Hey, Tom, how are you?
Good, yeah.
I just got an update from out of weather cells. Let's see what it says.
The floor.
Yeah, it does have a wind advisory.
It did. Only a tad, Mike, so I'm laughing about it.
Shingles zero to one inch for Wayamaka.
Like the dust?
Less, less than one inch.
As now?
That's what their forecast is for Monday night through Tuesday night. Expected wind gust thirty-seven.
Says secure outdoor objects. And a few power outages are possible.
Supposed to get cold tonight down the fourteen.
Fourteen?
Ruby Lake and Eureka are, well, Eureka's negative seven, Ruby Lake negative five, Ely negative eleven.
Guess it is blowing in some.
They've changed from fifty, fifty-two degrees.
That also happens during track. It'll be seventy at practice on Friday. And so then all the kids show up on Saturday for the meeting in their shorts and they're tanned up and it's like thirty-five.
Even as much as you tell us.
Yeah.
Assume the worst.
Pack warm clothes no matter what every week.
Mine was they would come and lay outside on the first day of the week. And I'd say, you guys can get sun.
Did you ever hear anything else from MIS with the maritime data?
I never heard anything else.
So they sent me a new box and I put it up and uh tuned it up and everything. And I haven't heard anything. I even went home and had a little lunch. So I was gonna log on and see if I could find out what the question asking information.
I don't know. Yeah, usually they only give me if it's not working.
And that's what I thought, but there was such a long period where it wasn't working. Maybe they just stopped it because they sent out the new box. And they sent them back their old ones, so um I wanted to double check because I got it. There was a UBS label that they uh made it out, so I was trying to make it out, but I didn't have time for that. So. Anyway, I just wanna make sure, so I will call them again tomorrow when you still have the groundings posted.
Still have your plans.
Yeah, I have your hours. Okay.
See, Randy, they're all here.
Yep.
Yep.
You noticed I did give a courtesy call out on Sunday.
Yeah. You didn't bother it on Monday.
You really have it on Monday?
Hey, I ain't got one.
You weren't a board member. That's the only reason I did.
Do you normally call me though or am I?
I slipped.
See?
Happy Valentine's Day. Well, it's about that time. Would you join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag of our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any public comments, personal communications, correspondence? If not, then we'll go on to the minutes for correction or approval. Did all board members get a chance to look over the minutes? Discussion or comments or?
Remove the minutes be approved as submitted.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any warrants for review or approval, Alicia? Okay, business items for discussion and action. First thing on my agenda is the uh, these folks were here last year, the Sports Park Club of America. The dates in that, it says three to four June. Their dates are asking for is the number one priority date. They're looking for the tenth through the eleventh of June. And if that's not possible, the twentieth through the twenty-first of May. And Jerry Brown with the Snake River Region SCCA has requested to hold another event here like they did last year at the airport. Same scenario. Actually, it's instant replay of what they did last year, which went quite well, so um staff recommends approval that. If anybody has any comments or questions?
Uh, what was the date on that? Because it says June third and fourth.
I know. They, it's been changed. They're asking for the tenth through the eleventh of June as their first date. As an alternate, the twentieth or the twen- through the twenty-first of May.
I would definitely say the May one. We're getting into fire season in June, especially the second week of June. So I think we're supposed to be getting the possibility of planes that week. And then if there's any early fires, then that's gonna end up getting canceled if they keep creeping into June like that.
Because last year they had, it was on the Labor Day.
Memorial Day.
Labor Day week, rather.
They changed their dates like about four times last week. So I, because their preferred, they ended up with was the tenth and eleventh, but I asked them to have a second, a backup date earlier. And so that was the May twentieth and twenty-first.
And they had that the first year that they were here. It was that third weekend of May, and I think it worked out really well. Memorial Day, it didn't seem like it went too well for them last year because there were so many events going on and the weather was not great, but um we can't predict that.
Yeah, they, I went out there that second day. It was, it was a little chilly, but it was uh, it was raining, but.
And May twentieth and twenty-first based on?
I would prefer that um, I believe in ten years we've only had one fire that was ever that early. And that was like two thousand twelve. So it's been a while. Um, I think it's a whole lot better for guaranteeing, but it will happen.
Hey, does your not?
It's up to the board.
No, Alicia said that we wouldn't have anything better. Yeah.
We're in, in this, we can talk about this more during the ACIP um discussion, but we're in federal fiscal year twenty-three right now, which we have that bill project for the airfield signage. But the heavy ramp construction is not slated until federal fiscal year twenty-four, which is after October first of this year.
So there wouldn't be the.
I thought it was one this year and then one in twenty-five. It doesn't say that. I know this AI.
Yeah, I saw that. That's what we talked about too.
But the, the last schedule I saw was half this year and half in twenty-five.
Let me pull up uh last year's.
Yeah, and I know sometimes that this year and next year.
Yeah, that's.
Just the October.
The federal year, yeah.
They'll, you know, and I remember this for years of thinking it's gonna be July first and then realize it's October first, which is becomes still this year, but almost next year.
You are right though, Brad. It looks like the, it looks like everything got pushed a year. And I don't know if that's due to federal funding, because sometimes FAA won't fund it in that year. And we have our ACIP meeting coming up in February, so for next week.
Because that was.
Everything did, everything did get pushed back.
Pushed a year, yeah, everything.
And how did that happen?
Just like, just like.
I didn't, I didn't know anything about it. It was, like I said, the last, last meeting, it was all set to start.
Well, we can ask Nadine and Paul or Mike in the next agenda item when we're actually talking about ACIP. So I don't know if it's related to funding or something.
Let's talk about that for the next agenda item.
Okay.
I would, whatever the board wants to do.
Oh, I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the twentieth and twenty-first.
The May.
Excuse me. I sent you into that for the May. Sorry.
Twenty, twenty, twenty-one, May.
With that Sports Park Club of America.
Should I give a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's what we'll do. All right, let's go into the ACIP and uh, did everybody's got a copy of it? I know you got some, guys got some questions, so. Let's get after it.
And the, the meeting is, with the FAA is scheduled for next Wednesday at twelve-thirty?
This Wednesday.
This one.
Oh, this Wednesday at twelve-thirty.
That's why we're meeting ahead prior to meeting with them on a teleconference.
Yeah.
On the fifteenth. So you have some questions, Brad, on that? You wanna start off?
Well, with the schedule, and maybe we could hear from Antron.
Sure. So you're asking um about this year's schedule versus last year, essentially?
Versus last month. The, the schedule at the last meeting, the schedule was, the destruction was due to start this.
This year, which is twenty-three. Um. Has everything just been pushed back?
Yeah, yeah. So I, I guess um, yeah, the, everything is pushed back a year based on the last ACIP. Excuse me. And um essentially with the ACIP in general, uh, these are the priorities of the airport in a list um based on what needs to be done first and I, I guess, to put it bluntly, none of it's guaranteed to happen in this, in this order um and this promptly. So it is based on funding and the FAA ultimately has the last and the final say on what happens um with that funding. And a lot of it has to do with state apportionment too. So when several airports in Nevada have several, you know, have a lot of big projects, there, there's not enough money to go around for everyone to do their big projects. And when I say big projects, I mean multi-million dollars um per airport. So uh, when it comes down to it and um each airport has a, like a initiation letter is what the FAA called it. And those are the projects that we intend to do for that year uh for each airport. So based on the initiation letter that One Lepa Airport got this year, that project was not on there. So essentially that's our cue to which projects we can do each year. We're gonna ask for what the highest priorities are in the order that they are on the ACIP list. We're gonna ask for those every year that we can, because you know, essentially as they say too, if you don't ask for it, you don't get it. And if you recall, we've been asking for this for several years in a row, so it's um, it's unfortunately not guaranteed every time we ask for something like this, but um they know it's uh the highest priority for the airport and it's on their radar. Um, it's just a matter of uh, I guess to, to put it in a way, it, it's just a matter of when it's your turn, if that makes sense, when it comes to like state apportionment.
Nadine, do you remember the, the total amount for the Nevada state apportionment? For some reason I have like six and a half million or something. It's not very big.
That's correct. Um, I don't know if it's six and a half million. I thought it was actually closer to like four or five million.
Okay.
Um, but it's not a lot.
So the last, or actually almost every ACIP meeting we have, the entire state of Nevada only gets I don't know, somewhere between four and six and a half million dollars. And so when we have a really big project like the heavy ramp where we're requesting two and a half million at a time, they, they don't always give it to us if there's other projects in Nevada that are also multi-million dollar projects. So that's how sometimes they get pushed out in the list for funding.
But now that I think about the last two years, there was a year that they skipped us. And they, they basically just dropped the ball. And I thought at that time they said, we'll come back. Was that last year?
That was on the general aviation that we just finished, the general aviation paper.
So that was what they covered it with, with this year or for, okay.
Yeah, and that wasn't any fault of the airport.
Right.
Um, that was the, if I recall correctly, I don't know that I was um working with Armstrong yet, but I, it was their fault. They dropped the ball on that.
That's the first time we got left out in the cold, if I recall.
So when we take a look and approve this or move stuff around, it's a one-year, I mean, can it be?
We do it every year.
It can be augmented during the year, right after your, after the funding is approved for each airport. So it says twenty-twenty-three, or excuse me, twenty-twenty-four for the reconstruction heavy ramp. It may not even be this, in October. This is our hope, but it's still on it for sure.
And yeah, and this list is not set in stone either. This is a draft list. And based on the meeting that we'll have with the FAA on Wednesday, it could still change from this version um depending on how the meeting goes.
Okay.
It, it's not gonna change drastically, but it, it could, you know, we could move stuff around.
So for two thousand twenty-three, we have uh airfield signage and snow removal equipment. Is that what's happening this year? Are there only two things?
In this current, well, the.
Snow removal.
Was, yeah, was last year.
We're just gonna get, that didn't happen.
No, we're gonna get it this year.
This is two thousand twenty-three, right? So I was asking if, if the snow removal equipment and the airfield signage, which is slated for two thousand twenty-three, are those the only two projects happening at the airport?
Based on this ACIP, yes.
Are we doing the lighting with the signage or is this just for signs?
It's the signage which includes the lighting and the windsocks.
Okay.
Is that right, Nadine?
Well, it depends, well, it depends on what lighting you're referring to. We do have um uh the taxiway edge lights and airfield lighting projects slated for later. Was, so we were.
Oh, okay, see, two thousand twenty-seven.
Which lighting are you referring to?
Is the one in two thousand twenty-seven then the one on Echo?
That's for.
Yes.
Yeah, that's down the line.
Okay, so then what is the lighting that's being included in the project?
Those signs, the signings, the lights that got some of, the signs and stuff, the lights.
Signs.
We, when we went out on that tour with Chris, that's what they're talking about.
Okay, and would that also include that Pappy light on three-two then?
I did talk about that. When did I? Nadine, did I talk about the Pappy with you or was that with somebody else?
Yeah, that was what, that's when we were there.
Oh, right. Yes, that's right.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're, I think we'll have to talk about that one with the FAA as far as eligibility and when we can do that so that it's funded, so that it's federally funded. Because the timing of that, I don't know that we can lump that in with the signage.
We can talk about that on Wednesday then, hopefully?
I, yeah, I think we, we should definitely make um uh some discussion points on that on Wednesday. Because we, I, I would like to know where we can fit that in, where it makes the most sense. Because if it, excuse me, if it blows the signage project um uh, you know, over what we, what you would have for bill funding already, um then I don't know that that would make the most sense. So uh, we, we just need to, I, I think we should have a conversation with them. While, you know, while we're doing the ACIP meeting, it's a good time to bring it up as, as a priority because it hasn't been ACIP previously, uh, the Pappys specifically. So I, I think it'd be a good idea to get their take on where, where to kind of fit that in.
As far as bill funding goes, Nadine, I think that, and the, the board can chime in also, but I think the Pappy is higher priority than maybe some of the snow removal equipment. Like we have, down the line, we have three hundred and thirty thousand of bill funding toward additional attachments for the snowplow. But if we need to use twenty-five, fifty thousand, whatever it is of that for the Pappy, that's probably more desirable. If, if that's something that could help in Wednesday's meeting.
Yes, especially in, in twenty-twenty-six, we're talking about a coring, and we've had that on there forever, but getting a loader and attachments for that loader. If we've got a new snowplow that's gonna have a trunk with a blade on, maybe we could get rid of that and look at an attachment to the snowplow truck or something, but I don't think, I don't think that snowplow loader and attachments is a priority. And that.
Okay, yeah, we, that's, yep, for sure. So that's, that's exactly why we're reviewing this right now, so we can move stuff around. Um, so this is the copy that the FAA, the FAA has right now for the meeting. So I'm gonna make notes and make sure that they're aware that we do intend to either move stuff around or replace um certain things and uh, we can, we can either hash that out right now or um on Wednesday. So if you for sure wanna move that, um, like the snow removal equipment attachments from twenty-twenty-six, we could just have that in our uh, you know, in our notes for Wednesday.
I think the board would like to have, we'd like to make our decision now on that. And then, that being said, substitute that with the, the Pappy lights if that's the, if it comes down to that.
Yeah, if we can use bill funding for the Pappy, I think we should do that. And if we can do it with this airfield signage project, we should do that also.
Yeah.
Back in October, there was a letter from Kurt from the state.
I got that.
There was several, you got, had copies of it. Several items listed that needed to be done. Uh, and one, one was the, in fact, number one was changing the runway designation.
That was part of the signage, I thought.
Well, the signage, if you do the signage without doing that, then you're gonna be doing the signage again. Have you did that? So.
I thought we had that all encompassed when we went on that tour.
And that's what I'm wondering is, is if this changing runway designations is part of this same project?
From my understanding, and I might not understand it correctly, but I thought that the changing of the runway designations has to come down from the FAA. We don't get.
It's, it's Kurt is speaking on behalf of the FAA.
Uh, Kurt is not part of the FAA. He's part of NDOT.
I understand, but he states here that on behalf of FAA, he does the inspection.
But Kurt, Kurt does not speak for the FAA. So regardless of what his letter says, and, and the MAGBAR issue is a lengthy drawn-out process because approaches and everything has to be changed accordingly, so it's not just new paint.
So it's because it's too complicated, we are, we're not gonna do it?
No, I, that's not what we're saying. But we can't do it in a rut because Kurt says so. And, and the bill funding is a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. It does, it's not a lump sum amount. So we're here to try and figure out how you want to spend that money, and I certainly understand the Pappy priority. And we can slip that in up higher. It can take place of the signage or whatever, but it's, this is the FAA's process, not ours. We have to work within their parameters and accomplish your objectives with their concurrence and blessing.
About how does it normal, or does it normally take once a process has, has been started to change the designation for the runways?
That's probably, I would guess, it's a six-month to twelve-month process. Because there's multiple FAA divisions involved with this. It's not just the ADO.
I think his point was if we change the signs now, we're going to be changing them within the foreseeable future. So it might not be a top priority.
I fully understand that and it's, it's a valid point. And, and, but again, we're, we're saying that this is an issue because Kurt said it's an issue. And I think we need, we need to evaluate it and verify where we are. But all, a lot of airports in our region are, are going through MAGBAR changes right now. Because that's where the earth is. So it is a project to be, to be done. The question is, how do we do it? And part of that is, you know, we typically try to combine that with a pavement maintenance project because you're restriping the runway.
Yeah, that, that was a conversation that I had, I believe, with Chris, was that it makes sense to do it with a pavement rehab project, which we have in twenty-twenty-four. And the signage, I don't, I don't recall how many signs, I know there are at least two on the runways that say, you know, fourteen thirty-two and twelve twenty, but um the pavement markings are more significant than the actual signage with the, with the runway designations.
It sounds to me like we should prioritize that Pappy system if that has to take precedent over anything on the airfield signage. I would think we would wanna try to call that one more.
I would think so.
I would think so, especially if we're gonna change it in a year. In, in fact, it's only a year with the FAA.
And then, Mike, when uh, when does the FAA intend to, or do we know when they would intend to do this uh remarking of the runways?
I think it, it's, I think it would be based on us having communications with them um to identify their position with regards to the magnetic variation and re, and the realignment of the, not the realignment of the runway, but the re-marking of the runway. And we, like, we do have a pavement rehab for both runways scheduled in twenty-twenty-five. So i- in essence, if we start that conversation with, with the different parts of the FAA, which is, you know, approach airspace and other things, and start that process, we can, we can time all of, we can work towards timing all of this so that it happens, they're working their line of, of communication and, and needs on their side. We're planning for and budgeting for the airfield and have them all come together at the same time. Because the last thing we want is approaches that are identifying a runway number and the runways aren't numbered that way yet.
Right.
So it's, 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 it's a fairly lengthy process because we are working with multiple FAA groups. But they all, they all have their priorities and processes too. So with Kurt's letter, that's obviously an impetus to, to start the process, but it's not a requirement that it happens tomorrow. but it's not a requirement that it happens tomorrow.
So in your ASAP meeting, we should recommend, uh, to give priority of PAP system and try to align the redesignation for twenty twenty-five.
With the resection.
With that.
And Mike, is it, does this, uh, change, does it start with us with the request, or does it start with them saying, we're gonna start doing it? Or is it just something that they got?
I think, I, to be, to be honest, I, I truly, I don't know. Um, but I think that it should start, we've got Kurt's letter. We use his comments as a starting point to reach out to the FAA folks. And, and I really need to talk to Justin about this, because this is the planning world, not the, not the engineering world per se, right? We will change the markings, but the planners work with the FAA folks to identify the process by which we go about changing the magnetic variation markings on the runway. So we can, we can do some discussion, internal discussions before the meeting tomorrow and come back to you and be able to have a recommended approach for all of this, to start the discussion with the FAA. And I think one of the projects, we, because we have pavement re, um, rehabilitation projects on your ASAP, that by working with the FAA, we can account, we can get all of this done in, in that process.
I think it's worth noting that Lovelock has changed, Battle Mountain has changed, and Elko has changed.
Time for us to get on board, huh?
Stands out.
So at this time, what we're thinking about is moving the, um, moving up to-
To do with a loader and attachments.
But for twenty twenty-three, we're gonna remove that signage for this year, is that the?
Move, do put PAP in there?
Yeah, use bill funding for PAP if it's eligible, if we can, if the FAA is on board with that. Yeah, and then we can move the airfield signage in twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five or something, again with bill funding and, and we can reduce the amount of bill funding for a snow attachment or something later on, you know, to, to cover the PAP project.
My other question, in two thousand twenty-seven, it has replaced airport beacon and tower. I thought we decided not to do that since we went through and made the beacon a historical landmark.
We're, uh, I think the board's got some comments on that, I know I do. I think we need to not replace that airport beacon and tower.
No, and I did, I thought that that's what we talked about, so it's just on the ASAP and I didn't know.
And I think the board members, correct me if I'm wrong, they're probably in favor of keeping that historical uh, tower and beacon. And I don't think we could give money to refurbish that, can we, Mike or Nadine? Otherwise, we could just have to do it on our own to clean it up a little bit. But it's, it's worked, it's working. Why can't we refurbish it?
I think the FAA funding is restricted. Yeah, I think they don't allow renovations.
Don't allow renovation.
Just, right.
I have a question.
It's a new coat of paint?
I have a question for Mike. This, uh, tower or beacon that's just brought up, is there a reason why it would have to be replaced? Are there new requirements, uh, for beacons in, in this new century? Or is it-
I don't, I don't believe so. I think it's, I think, I think the main focus is reliability. So if you guys have a historical beacon and you wanna keep a historical beacon, then you more than likely will face the challenges of maintaining a historical beacon. Um, the new beacons are significantly smaller, they use LED lights, they're brighter, more reliable, um, from an operational standpoint, preferred. But I understand the desire to keep things that have significant historical value operational, it's just, who pays for it? And it's not the FAA.
Thank you.
And I think, maybe another discussion we had was we could possibly keep that beacon, where it is the historical one, as like a landmark thing, but then have a, a new one installed that's actually the operational beacon.
Bless that, that one please.
If I'm, and also, if I may, I, um, Chris is on the road, but I texted him about part of this discussion. Um, and he said that, uh, the, the FAA decides about MAGBAR and typically they reach out to us when they want to make those changes. Us being us, you, and, and then we get involved. So, um, but again, we will, we will dig into this a little bit more, see if they have it on their radar, and we will work diligently to stay ahead of it.
I was just gonna add something about the beacon. Um, right now Hawthorne is doing kind of what you said, where they're leaving their existing beacon where it is and installing a new one kind of right next to it. Um, so that is an option. But you don't, you, you know, if, if it's preferred that you just keep the existing and use the existing, um, that works too.
Maybe, just my opinion, maybe we oughta just, uh, not have replaced, or put that at the bottom of the, the bottom of the lottery list.
It's always, it's always down.
Way down the line, so it's, it's not a place by the time we-
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it, there's a lot of steps before whatever.
I mean, it's not imminent. Yeah, exactly. That's not a priority.
We, yeah, we can push that down. Um, the FAA will ask how, I don't know how much detail they would want, but they will ask how the airport intends to spend the bill funding. Because you don't, you really don't want that to go to waste, really. Um, and I don't think it will. But removing, for example, if we, um, remove the signage project or replace that with the PAP project, we could show, uh, you know, the total amount there is two twenty instead of one ten. But if we completely rem, or I guess we could just move down the beacon and tower and keep it as bill-funded. Um, and then same thing with the snow removal equipment loader and attachments. We can move it down and leave it as bill-funded, or we can switch projects into the bill funding. It's kind of, you kind of have a lot of options there. Uh, but we wanna show bill funding allocated, all of the bill funding allocated to projects.
We still have to show it, but we'll just prioritize it.
Just your intent to use it, yeah, they, they'll wanna see your intent to use it. Yep.
So it's five hundred and fifty thousand in, in bill funding, it needs to be spread out a little something.
So the, the reason why I say two twenty for this, if we say this year's the PAP project, I think because you'll have one ten from twenty twenty-two and then, or is it?
Twenty-two.
All the way to twenty twenty-one, I think, I'm not even sure when it started, which fiscal year. Um, I think it was fiscal year twenty twenty-two, so that would've been the end of twenty twenty-one. So you have two years essentially of bill funding right now.
And five years to spend it. I think five, maybe four.
I think it's-
So many different funds to keep, keep track of right now.
Yeah. Uh, and that actually reminds me, so if you do have any, um, Felicia, I don't know if you know off the top of your head, if you do have any, um, like ARCA or SERSA funding left, that might be one way to, to, uh, fund refurbishing your beacon um, in the ways that, the, in the, in the ways that, um, make it easy for the FAA to accept the reimbursement. Um, meaning, you know, using salaries and, um, wages and stuff like that to, to pay for that kind of thing.
We do still have some of that funding. Um, is, are you guys aware of a, a company that does that? But like, that would paint the beacon? Because locally, there's, most people don't want to go up on the be, on the beacon.
Somebody wants to.
Yeah, they don't, they, we actually have a hard time finding somebody who wants to maintain the beacon.
I'm, I'm certainly not aware of anyone.
Yeah.
Which might be why.
Yeah, so that's, because even Drake, Cam Drake, the last time he went up there to replace, his employee went up there, they said that was the last time.
They were going up in a bucket truck?
They said that was the last time they're going up on the beacon.
We'll, we have to get the EBS test out of there.
Was, was that, was, uh, uh, was that to replace the bulbs?
No, the FAA, when they came out to do the new DME building, um, they cut through the power for the beacon and they weren't one hundred percent sure that was the power, because we don't have schematics for that. And, um, now we do. But they done it at the time, and so anyway, they cut through the power and they had to make sure that that was actually the power and not something else was wrong with the beacon. So he just repaired that wire, um, in the ground, and I think he rerouted it. And so now we have schematics of all of that for the beacon, and it works.
I'm curious why the guy wouldn't go up the, would, said he wouldn't go back up the tower, is it Ricky and?
I think it actually does sway in the wind, it, you can't. I don't know visually, you can see it.
It's unsafe, but can we?
Well, the other thought is to be proactive and prepare for a new, uh, beacon in the event that this does finally become inoperative. We don't wanna be rushing around at the last minute trying to, uh,
Find somebody who likes to open a building.
So, just a thought.
Well, and if that's the case, maybe that's something that needs to be moved up to.
It needs to be.
Maybe we could find out why he didn't wanna go up there.
Yeah, I'll talk to Kevin, because he's still going to do the windsock and the light for the windsock on the beacon doesn't work right now. Um, and I'm assuming that's just a bulb. So he hasn't been able to get out there, because it was pretty soggy. But he's still planning on doing it, um, as a light.
Well, he don't wanna do it in the wind, I mean, if, if the truck would do it, I mean.
Has to be dry.
That, that tower is solid, it's been there for how many years?
Yeah, I don't think the tower's in danger of falling, I just don't think that he likes going up there very much, yeah.
It's gonna be tied off.
Rocky goes up and gets rid of the nest.
No, he did, they got rid of the, he hears that, but too old now.
But I think it's a good idea.
Let's let that bolt and jerk for a while.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think it would be, as he said, to look forward and say, okay, if we can't fix the beacon, I, you know, my question is, do we have anything to fix the beacon with? And is it available in case it does go down? But if we're going to put a new beacon up, it'd probably worth keeping in there and, and having that on the schedule and just getting done.
Yeah, I'm just saying, keeping it a lower priority for now. I agree with you.
We don't wanna get rid of the, the old beacon
No.
because of the history, but to upgrade the airport, it wouldn't be a bad deal.
Yeah.
Like I say, there may be parts that aren't available.
Just like the PAP.
Yeah, just like the old one.
Yeah, just like everything, yeah.
Can somebody share, I'm, I am curious about the historic value of the beacon? Is it a leftover from the old airway system?
From the air mail.
Part of-
From the air mail run.
Okay, so it's pretty significant.
It's, it's, yeah, it's documented, it's historical.
We had a, a, a pie card and a dedication for it to Mike.
Last year.
Twenty-one, October twenty-one.
Yeah.
But, and, and I don't know, I heard one of you folks mention about parts. So, you know, I mean, ultimately, this unit will timeout.
Yeah.
Right, and so, um, being who I am, I fully understand and respect the historic nature of keeping it operational. Um, but I think you are wise to consider what your options are gonna be, because there will be a time when you can't fix it anymore.
Is, is that hundred and ten thousand dollars a reasonable, reasonable amount of money to put up a new beacon?
That's a good question for what it might cost in twenty twenty-seven. Um, it, it's essentially, that number is essentially one year of bill funding. Um, so, it's, it's kind of like us hoping that's going to be what it'll cost, um, at that point. But keep in mind too, if you do have, um, you don't have to use one, you know, a hundred and ten thousand exact amount, um, in one go. If there's loved over from previous years, that funding rolls over and you can use it uh, within that, you know, that five-year time slot of when it was issued, so.
I guess the concern is if it's, it comes up two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we only have a hundred and ten thousand left.
Then it can be split between bill funding and, um, like AIP funding. There are other options for it, it wouldn't be that you're just on the hook for the rest. Um, it, it would be, you know, we can explore at that time what other funding options there are, but you, you wouldn't be on the hook necessarily for hundreds of thousands of dollars if it's on there.
So we just cross our fingers and hope that it doesn't timeout in the next six months.
Well, we should definitely keep it on the radar.
If that's the case, um, you would wanna use your bill, because your bill funding isn't like, typically, you don't have to wait for the AIP cycle necessarily. You could say, um, if you had, you know, depending on how much bill funding you have, you could start the process as soon as you need to, um, for bill funding, yep.
So if it took a dump, we could circumvent, yeah, we could, we could get money for it.
Exonerate it.
Yeah.
Do you have any other issues on it, on the ASAP?
I have a question on, it mentions, and I, maybe it's just a typo, that the, the heavy ramp reconstruction, we have a phase two and a phase three, is that actually phase one and phase two?
Phase one is the design that's going on right now. And then phase two is the first phase of construction, and phase three is the second phase of the construction.
And then the other question is, long-term aircraft parking, where is that?
I believe that's on the east side of the general aviation ramp.
East side is where the, uh, CAP, on the east side is, back behind your anger.
It's not much though, twenty-eight hundred.
Square yards?
Square yards, huh?
Trying to compare that to some, yeah, because that's like a tenth of half of the heavy ramp, so yeah, not much.
And that's taking down the old weather building.
Yeah, so that's, that's how we can fund you to demo, is if we build something elsewhere it is.
That was the idea, to get rid of that Honda-infested back place. Yeah, we can't just get a bulldozer and get rid of it.
Well, if you wanna pay for it, yes.
Not me, you. That being said, real quick, I noticed there's a semi out there and a trailer, who, whose is that?
That is, um, the gentleman who is with Paula. He brought out, um, he brought out some equipment, and so he will be taking that back out. Uh, he was using it to help with the FBO, and so he's gonna take that back out.
I just wondered, sitting out there, if we could blow the beacon. Look, he's being, he's being, he's being facetious. Do you know what that means? Any other, do we have any other items on the ASAP? You guys got anything for us, Mike and Nadine?
So-
You think we're on the right recommendations?
I, I want, we talked about prioritizing your bill money and the- I, I want, we talked about prioritizing your bill money and the notes I've got is the number one project you want to see done is the PAP on three-two, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And then the second one is to begin the process with regards to Magbar and kind of identify what the requirements are for that. That's not necessarily going to be spending money because we intend on that project being part of a pavement maintenance project, but, so it's not really bill funding, but it, it is your priorities on things that you're looking for answers and direction for.
Yes, and that, that may affect the signage project as well.
Yeah.
Right, because we want to let, make sure that we're not, uh, not installing and replacing just like, you know, don't build a road and then cut a water line under it.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll, we'll certainly work on that. Then my understanding is, we want to keep the beacon on as a placeholder and because it is bill, it's pretty flexible in how it can move, but that needs to stay on the ASAP as a bill-funded project.
Correct.
Yes.
And you're not, you're not overly concerned about SRE equipment with regards to the loader and attachments, but, um, we will leave it on for now because it's further down the list and it's gonna be, basically, it's gonna be a placeholder, but if we identify, if you identify other bill-fundable projects, we need to be able to put them in, but quite frankly, if we don't have a project by the time the FAA approves this ASAP, it's, it's not gonna matter too much because we'll change, we will be able to change it again as we move through the process. Um, because typically, they're really only focused on budgeting and planning for the first two, the first two years here. So we have room, but, but we need your guidance on projects that you think are a priority.
All right, well, what are the criteria for whether something is bill-funded or AIP-funded?
Um, well, basically, bill has a little bit more leeway with regards to how we decide on it and how you decide on it. AIP is really, that's congressionally appropriated FAA monies and, and as Alicia mentioned, you know, state, the ADO gets a certain amount of money, that's discretionary money and it's apportioned to states and it's a very competitive process. Bill was a congressional mandate, you got it, now the question is how do you spend it? But AIP is, there, truly, there are no guarantees except that you get, you get your entitlement every year. As far as big costly projects, like Alicia said, you know, we're competing with Reno, we're competing with Clark County, we're competing with Elko with their, you know, trying to get commercials, there's, it's tough, Nevada's a tough place to get discretionary funds, that's why a two and a half million dollar ramp project, um, it gets a lot of scrutiny and, and kicked, and honestly, you know, they've kicked it down, kicked, down the pipe, down twice on us.
If we got a good track record, we don't want to blow it. It's kind of like the squeaky wheel gets the grease, so we gotta, we're kind of, we gotta be, we gotta be smart how we're doing business.
Well, yeah, we keep pressing, you know, the, I mean, obviously, when the project stays at the top of your list, they know you, you, it's a priority.
And Mike, the VLM project coinciding with this rehab, does it help us at all when you're talking to the FAA?
I would, I, I would think it does.
Okay.
Because it's a, it's a non-FAA-funded improvement on the airfield and if we can show that there's a cost savings by combining projects and doing the work together, you, you know, I mean, honestly, we're, Mike, we're still dealing with people.
Right.
Right, you know, logic isn't always a priority for folks, um, but we, we certainly make that case, is there's an opportunity for cost savings.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
Mike, real quick, on that signage, and Natasha remembers this, uh, I don't know if Justin was with us, but Chris and I and, uh, Natasha and Mike Owens, we went out there and we, some of that signage was like, it was, there was some redundancy out there and the way Chris had it marked out, it was going to be taking some of this stuff away and having one kind of, uh, cartmetalized it more or less, so it wasn't, it wasn't confusing and there wasn't a lot of expense, I don't think, was involved in that particular signage portion, that's why we tried to put it into the priority. There wasn't anything really mentioned about lighting on those, uh, those, um, taxiways. We just had things out there.
Yeah, it was just a signage.
I think.
I think there was one with lights.
The one that needed to be replaced.
Had been shot.
Yeah, the one that got shot, so, um, and the rest of it could, like I say, be if we'd done with the reconstruction or paving, so this signage wasn't that big of a, of an expense, I don't think, but Chris would know more about that.
Yeah, and I wasn't on that walkabout with you guys, but isn't, isn't this project kind of related to the signs that the, the board and the former chair put out there as wayfinding?
Yes.
Non-FAA-approved wayfinding signage on the airfield, right?
Yes.
Is this, I, I think that's my, my recollection.
Yes.
So I think our goal was to take th- those signs out and have more standardized FAA tile of, of signage and such. And I don't think any of this, I don't think there's any lighting involved with it, I.
That's right.
I'm speaking out of turn because I'm, I'm not involved with this side of it, but that's my recollection because all those signs are not lighted and I don't think there was any intent of running electric out there because it'll break the bank.
There was, the, the signs that are lit out there, one was working, the other one was shot out, it just needed to be fixed, but there was no, there was no construction needed to build a new.
Yeah, electrical wires.
Lit sign.
Right, there was no new construction for lighting associated with this sign project?
No, there was for those taxiways and that's farther down the line with.
Yeah, that's.
With the paving.
That's, that would be combined as another pro, as another project.
Exactly, that's.
And then, I think that's why it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars, because if we were trying to bring in lighting circuits and things like that, it would, it would change up the.
That's exactly it. So if you could just convey that Wednesday.
So we can, yeah, so we can, I guess, it, I mean, the lighting, sorry, the signage project is already on there, so we can still talk about keeping it and restricting, restricting it to replacing signage, like you're saying, that's non-standard.
Right.
Or confusing or, um, anything that wouldn't need to get replaced if and when the runway, uh.
Exactly.
Numbers change, right?
That's correct.
So, um, it, it'll be a small enough project, we would just replace everything that we can that wouldn't need to get replaced later, again.
Yes.
And so, I think for Nadine and I to understand, we want to move that signage project down a little ways and we want to move a PAP project up.
Yes.
Right, and we want to figure out how that bill money, what's already allocated and available and how that fits into that equation.
Yes.
That, that would be your preference for the discussion on Wednesday?
Yes.
Yes.
With part of that, I think the windsock needs to be fixed as a priority also.
And that doesn't need any electricity ran out to it either, it just needs a new pole.
Yeah.
Essentially, that's not breakable, the windsock off three-two.
Do you get that, Nadine? There's no, there's no electrical or construction for windsocks, it's just replacement.
It's already on solar, it's just in that, like, hole, essentially.
That's why we're asking for a pole down low and it's, and it's blown, blows over.
Yeah, the intent is still to include that in the signage, um, project.
Right.
But again, we do have to figure out the style of, of that and I don't know if we, at this point, I don't know if the non-frangible, um, pole is an option. Um, so again, we, we have to look into that. We can get it replaced, that's fine, but whether or not it's frangible is kind of another story.
They're gonna want it to be frangible if it's within the safety area, right? I mean, so, if, if, if your winds are such that a frangible windcomb breaks off out there, uh, I, I, then it's gonna have to be further out, away from the end, from the runway.
Or.
Because they won't, they won't let us deviate from safety with regards to installing a new windsock.
What kind of distance is that? I mean, it's already quite a ways from the.
There's not, we're not looking to move it, it's good where it is, it just needs to be a little bit taller.
Well, they're talking about the frangible, so with the wind, which that sock around with our gusts and it keeps snapping, because that is what we're assuming is happening since there's no, I mean, there's no cattle prints, there's no vehicle prints, nothing out there and they do keep snapping, it just, I think it's in a wind bowl because it's down lower than the sand around it and we talked about our option, either moving it out of that hole or possibly making the pole higher, but what he's saying is they won't allow, since it's in that area away from the runway, um, certain distance, they won't allow it not to be frangible, so it will be breakable.
So how often does it come down?
It's broke twice, well, it's been down more than it's been up. Uh, he fixed it and it was up for maybe three weeks last time, uh, because we waited up quite some time for the parts, so I think it was down six months until he fixed it up for three weeks and it's been down since.
Okay, but, oh, well, then I need to rephrase my question. Uh, fact that it's down is depending on when it gets fixed, but once it's up, you said it blew down in three weeks?
Yes.
But is that, is that, is that a rare occurrence that it happens that frequently? I mean, has it been up for a year or two at a time?
I, I believe so, um, I'm trying to remember, before, I think it had only broke one other time since it had got done and then it happened twice, but we've had a lot of really bad windstorms.
Yeah.
And the other base thing is the pilots have complained, they are not able to see it even when it's up because of where it's at and how low it is and it's surrounded, I mean, it is in a sand hole, so it's surrounded by that and it's very low.
Well, and, so if it's relocated, perhaps it could actually be on a lower pole and still remain on a frangible company.
Yeah.
If it's not down in the hole.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And then I, I just want to make sure, so at the end of Wednesday's meetings, we'll have a bill grant of a hundred and ten thousand dollars of some sort of projects, is that the objective?
We have our bill funding no matter what, so FAA is, we already have it and we have probably two hundred and twenty thousand, we have two years' worth of bill funding available to us right now in this year.
Okay, so besides the PAP, we could do some.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I would think that we're gonna want to look at what a PAP project entails and figure out the funding stream for that project since that's your number one priority.
Do you need an approval of this? Of the changes?
Yeah, we'll see the changes.
One at a time.
I don't think.
After the meeting, sorry, just real quick, after the meeting, I can send you the changes that were discussed in the meeting with the FAA, if you want to do it that way, because they will, um, the FAA will require, will request like a, a final official ASAP list, um, so we can definitely take it, and that, I don't think that one's due until May, um, so there will be time to review it. Uh, again, the only thing is after the meeting with the FAA, you don't really have as much room for changes at that point, um, you would just be able to see it before we submit it.
Would bill funding cover any improvements or possibly expansions with the terminal building? Or with that, I know that ASAP normally won't.
The terminal buildings, funding is a little tricky, they did have, or they do have continuous applications to apply for specific bill funding, uh, sorry, bill funding specific to terminals, um, the bill funding is a little bit more lenient than normal AIP, um, but it's a little more tricky, I think, I don't know, Mike, if you know anything more in that detail.
The, the actual terminal funding that was included is very, is competition-based and you guys would not compete well. Um, so, but if there is something in the terminal building that you think warrants expending some money, it would be good to know what it is you're looking for, um, and then we have to figure out if it's fundable or not.
Okay.
It's, you know, I, I, honestly, there's no such thing as free money.
Yeah.
There are multiple strings and we have to figure out how to untie the knot.
Okay, I guess we're set for the ASAP on Wednesday and we'll.
Bring the final draft back for approval in either March or April.
Yeah, yeah. That being so, anybody have anything else on the ASAP? If not, we'll go into this staff board, the project updates. Um, snow removal equipment, Mike and I talked about that.
I've got, I've got some new info.
Okay.
Um, I communicated with the Hankey guy today, the, uh, the last of the running gear and I'm honestly not sure what that is, but he communicated today that, uh, the wheels have arrived, um, everything should be ready to go, he said, by March third, the vehicle will be shipped to Reno, to the Silver State International, where they will install the aviation band radio and antenna. After that work is complete in Reno, the truck will be delivered to Winnebago.
Maybe by the end of March, first part of April, we're thinking?
That's kind of optimistic, Jerry, yeah, I would say middle to the end of April is probably more realistic.
Middle to the first part of recent.
There you go.
That's funny.
Just in time.
Yeah.
Um, and, and, um, as I told you this, this morning, Wayne, the, the plan is, there will probably be somebody from Silver State, the Hankey representative will be here, uh, and I will be there, uh, and we will go through the vehicle, accept the vehicle if it meets spec, uh, and then the Hankey guy will train us up on the plow operation and maintenance. So Alicia, as this gets closer, I'll keep you in the loop on, on that and I would suspect some ace from motor pool will want to be there.
All right.
Cool. The GA Airport Hard Stand, we're currently in one-year warranty period, we're monitoring the cracking in the concrete, we're in the, so we're on top of that, we know, when's our warranty run out?
Yeah, November.
November, December.
Twenty-three, yeah.
So, uh, Reconstruct Heavy Airport Design Services, they've done that, they're still doing it.
It's phase one.
Phase one, yeah.
Yeah.
Airport Industrial Park, Ken Hall with FAA indicated on February first this year that section one sixty-three analysis is in progress and nearing completion. You got a little bit more on the nearing completion?
I do not, that's his same line, I think I've heard that probably for a year or more, I'm not sure, um, but I, I will, I will ask him again on Wednesday.
Yeah.
But yeah, that was the latest update, um, on February first.
In a meeting with, on this one sixty-three, I was told the other day it has been done, so I, like I told them, I haven't seen any figure work, so.
I haven't received anything.
So I will correct them for putting that out in the public.
Did, uh, the FAA said it was done, I mean, okay, yeah, I have not received anything from the FAA.
So we didn't stay on top of that, obviously. Uh, the loom site, nobody wants to move into them buildings?
Nope, no. Nope, no new updates for the Loom site.
BLM project update, we'll talk about that a little bit.
Sure, we, I had a meeting with the BLM last week. Um, the, the city attorney and the legal on the BLM side, they're just going over some revisions that are all just. Very minor legalese type stuff. Uh, and the BLM also. I believe they wanted to put in some new grounding equipment, which they did on one of their buildings a couple of years ago and. Maybe adding it over at the seat base as well, so there might be another small addition or they may do it as separate from this lease, I'm not sure. So we're, we're still working on that. Um, I discussed the new ASAP with the BLM, I had the draft at that point last week. And so they are good with the project schedule that works with their proposed schedule for their seat base expansion, so. Um, still, still good on the coordination effort there.
So possibly starting on the west side in twenty twenty-four?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's the plan.
Yeah, and they were in favor of the, our first phase of construction or phase two. BLM is in favor of being part of that first phase of construction.
That's a plus. Right. Do we have anything for the board? Anybody want to bring anything up before I go into public comments? We, we still got, uh, navades and stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We do, totally.
I went out to the BOR, um, on Friday. And everything's working, uh, well, has the green light, I know it's still not being monitored and. Going to phase out, but that's pretty much the extent of what I can do, so green lights are still on. Um, nothing's caught fire, so there was a black widow, it's warmer.
So is that scheduled for this month, isn't it?
Uh, no, new decommission date is April twentieth, twenty twenty-three. It was.
Was February?
February twenty-third, new date is April twentieth.
And that coincides with the issuing of the, of charts and?
Well, that, the original date, which was in November, that was supposed to coincide with the issuing of charts, so I'm not sure how that works now that it's been.
It's over fifty-six days, I think.
Okay, okay.
Uh, I, I'm not, the one concern I have about that is we don't have a qualified individual monitoring that. Um, you know, that's the, provides the instrument approach. Signals, if you will, for the airport and if that. I just wonder if there might be some liability there if we're not maintaining that with a qualified maintainer. Do we leave ourselves open for a, a VOR that is leaving somebody astray? Possibly leaving somebody astray.
Um, I would think that we, we have a special airport insurance policy and so I would guess that that's covered. Um, and from what I understand, there, there is not really any technicians that are. Trained in this type of VOR, John Farmer was like the last of them and he, he does not wanna do it anymore. So our options are to keep it as it is and just keep it running, or if we wanted to turn it off.
We could notem it down, essentially.
Yeah, we could turn it off and then do a notum that says it's.
No longer.
It's no longer functioning and, and then on the twentieth, the, the new charts come out.
I, I, I guess it's just a concern that, because I don't wanna think about it, it's still powered. And still apparently operating, although again, it's not monitored.
Yeah.
Uh, the only way it's monitored is if somebody.
Worked on it.
Reports it, yeah, a pilot says it's.
Pilot reports it down, uh, then it's down, but I, but again, I wonder about the integrity of the. Of the information it's providing, since we don't have, I don't know if there's anything that needs to be calibrated frequently or.
There is a, a. Component that is calibrated every one or two years and it was done. The previous time we did it, it was not done this last year because moving toward decommissioning.
I would think if we don't know that it's accurate, it should be shut down.
I was gonna say, if a pilot does notify us, maybe that's when we notem it.
It might be too late if it gets out.
No, that's the point, cause it could be working, but it could be misleading.
It could be putting out wrong information.
And the new DME is working.
Yeah, that's right, so the way we have it up.
So when we turn it off. That DME, again, that's the other part of the DOR, is, is the, they're just two separate things and either one of them could be wrong.
Do you know how to power it down?
No, but I mean, I mean, I'm assuming, yeah, I'm assuming there's just a red power button, I always just check for three lights, so. Um, and I mean, you can see where the deviation is on the monitor. Um, where it goes, but I do agree that, I mean, I don't want it putting out wrong information, especially I'm not qualified.
Yeah, and I don't know what it is, but.
Yeah, I mean, I can go out there and I can see.
Great.
What? I can always unplug something.
Well, would we, uh, there must be some procedure for notifying the FAA that we intend to do that?
You could just issue a notum and shut it.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, if I issue a notum, I mean, essentially it would be the same thing if we had a part and it was broken down.
Yeah.
A notum would just go out and, I mean, it's.
It's just turned on down.
But.
And the FAA was aware that if it went down.
It would be.
It, we weren't, there were not parts available, we don't have a technician, we, we didn't have any intention of fixing it, so.
It's right up there with the, with the beacon.
Right.
Yeah, we should make it a historical landmark.
This one we should not.
Which they will be.
That'll look good in your yard.
You didn't have a, sorry about that fixed base operator, you got anything else?
Real, real quick, do you want me to send Kenny out to investigate? Or you could meet him out there or I could just have him look and call Cam if he needs to, to power it down to the VOR.
Yeah, either way, I can go out there and I can just call Cam if, if it's more complicated than turning it off.
Okay.
Handle it.
Yeah, that's all.
There's a big switch.
So we're gonna try and.
So.
Do we have a motion to move forward on that or?
It's not an action item, it's not an agendaized item.
Just an, a direct directive.
Direct staff, yeah.
Just flip that switch.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll do civil air patrol. Real quick. Civil air patrol, the, the, that lieutenant colonel was in charge, I guess his son's taking over now. His, his son Lieutenant Wiltkowski, he's the new squadron commander, I guess. And I got a letter from, uh, the operations officer from that Nevada wing. And. Humboldt County Composite Squadron has a rich history in both CAP and community. Over the years, membership has, has fluctuated and, but efforts are being made to reorganize the squadron. Become, uh, a virtual asset to our community and provide growth and opportunities for youth. As a director of operations, I've had to make a hard decision. This is a little past history, that to move the aircraft from Winnemucca to another squadron. But the way, but that aircraft is waiting to come back to Winnemucca. And she says that to come back for training and update the squadron. Um. In order to do that, the squadron and me need your help, we need your participation. In the management of the squadron, participation in meetings, networking, networking in the community. The weekly meetings are still being conducted and waiting for your return. They're trying, they sent this out to members of the CAP, but also encouraging new members. Um. Please reach out to the new commander Lieutenant Joe Wiltkowski or me with any questions or ideas that you may have. Also, as some of you may know, I have been hired as a new emergency manager for Humboldt. For Humboldt County, is my responsibility to ensure preparation for, uh, ready, preparedness and. Uh, resilience of Winnemucca for all Humboldt County. I plan for the CAP squadron to be an integral part of this program. So the first inactive. So the first initiative being built as in an auxiliary, auxiliary communications team. This is a program that includes emergency communication training. Practice, exercise, and networking with the state of Nevada and surrounding counties. I'm reaching out to any or all of you, especially ham operator users. Who may be interested in valid communication capability for Humboldt County. Please re- reach out to me for any questions, I hope working with a new county team, you could contact me, Carol Lynn. She's Colonel CAP, she's also Director of Operations for Nevada Wing and our Humboldt County Emergency Services Manager, so. Doesn't have an airplane, doesn't have pilots, doesn't have a ground team search and rescue capability. But they got radio communications for emergency backup, so. Anybody and everybody's encouraged if they wanna along the CAP and join it. And she sent this letter out to the whole laundry list of folks. She's out, pilots out at the airport to see if anybody's interested, so it's an ongoing project. Um, and she's looking for our help.
What day are the meetings? Are they back to Tuesdays? Cause I know they were Fridays for a while.
They changed it to this past Friday and normally it's the second and fourth Tuesday. At eighteen hundred, which is six o'clock. And the cadets do every week. But this past meeting was Friday, but anyway, I've got the numbers and you know the people out there, but.
Do I have to list number? I just didn't know, cause, cause that.
They, they have to change a lot of people that they just can't get off work or whatever. It's, it's been an ongoing problem, but that's the latest on, on CAP.
What's, what's the schedule on the, the painting project?
They have. It's gone by wayside so far, I don't think they have the people to do it, they can't get the volunteers to do it.
They said when it got warmer, they were gonna go out there again, cause it had gotten cold so quickly on, in October.
The place is, it's all sanded down, ready to go, they'll probably have to do it again now that it's getting weathered, but. You know, they still plan on doing it, it's just a matter.
I told them they could use our paint sprayer over at the, I mean, they already have one, so they're gonna use that for the outside, but it has to get warmer.
So.
A little light at the end of the ta- uh, end of the tunnel on the CAP anyway.
Is it needed for it?
You got that covered? Um. This is Tom Haas and, and I'd like to see a public meeting out here for the public. To be informed of what our thoughts are on, in bringing sulfur out here by the airport, when there's so many misdemeanors out there. And I'd like to see that put on next meeting, is that a possibility?
Yeah, it's already planned for the March meeting, March thirteenth.
And who's the partner?
Uh, Lithium Nevada reached out to me, um. It was a, a while ago, around the same time they made a presentation to city council and they said they would like to do a presentation to airport board also. And so I contacted them when I was preparing this agenda and asked them if they were available to come today, they were not available today, but they said they are. Available to come March thirteenth.
I would like to start out with just asking the public to be here. And let's see what the public and their questions are, and then possibly we can put together a questionnaire for Lithium to. Come back to us and, and answer those questions, rather than, I mean, we've heard, I've heard. For presentations or from presentations for Lithium for two years now. And it's just barely getting out in the open and there's an awful lot of questions with the public that want to hear from the airport board. Rather than Lithium as to where our thoughts are on it. And where, you know, you as a part of the airport board, where those thoughts are, and then we can put together any other questions. And then go back and say, okay, Lithium, here's the questions, we'd like some answers to it, and then have another meeting.
So I'm not sure that the airport board meeting is the appropriate forum for that type of interaction where the public gets to ask all their questions. I think a public meeting is a great idea where the public can ask their questions, I have nothing against that. But the airport board. The airport board's role is not to field questions from the public. In that type of meeting, but, but certainly a community meeting. Type of thing that can happen, we, we agendize specific items that the airport board takes action on. It's not a Q and A period per se.
Let's start just the discussion.
As, as a neighbor of the airport and somebody who's very much interested in this, sorry, Christina Canessan. Um, the lack of, of public, like, any information is actually, I think. It's pretty bad right now. And I've asked in other meetings to have some sort of a town hall meeting or something. To get the word out to the public because I don't have the resources that the county or city does. And I've been getting nothing but, oh, it's up to the lithium mine, no, this is our community, we are all part of it. This is where somebody needs to step up and get the information to people so that people know what's going on and not hiding things. Because at this point, it looks like things are being hidden from the public. And if you want that to keep going, it's not gonna look good for everybody. This needs to be something that's brought to the community by the community. People are voted in to their positions, you know, this is, this is serious stuff. This is gonna affect everybody's lives around the airport. And for nobody to step up and say anything to the public is atrocious. It really, really is. And the fact that it's so hard to get the word out is just. It's so frustrating because people don't know and they still don't know. And I don't have the resources to go and do like a mass mailing or put something on the radio or anything like that. That's where the city, the county, the boards who are discussing the stuff, who have had this information for years. You do need to step up, you need to let people know what's going on because this is serious stuff. And the longer it's kept hidden, the worse it's gonna look. On everybody. And that's how the public feels about it right now, the few people who are actually hearing about the stuff. And I say few because most of our neighbors still don't know, I've had to literally go to people's doors. I've had to leave papers and they don't even know who it's coming from, and that's the complete lack of openness. What's going on, because people expect if something this big is happening, they expect. The city and county to inform them and it's not happening and it needs to happen.
So I just, again, I, I think a town hall meeting is a great thing that should happen, but. I don't think the airport board meeting is the appropriate forum for that, but I, I agree that a community meeting could and should take place.
We gotta start somewhere, I mean, if you guys can help.
Airport board's an advisory board, so we haven't even had a presentation from Lithium. And there's a lot of rumors going around, I'm sure everybody knows about stuff, but. We haven't, the board hasn't been presented the story.
You know, several, several years ago.
But.
Uh, we had a joint meeting of the airport board, the city council, and the county commission. To, to discuss an issue with, with, with the helicopter. And that was a, a pretty well attended meeting and, I mean, I, I don't know how you would. And that was a pretty well attended meeting and I mean, I, I don't know how you would coordinate that, get a meeting like that going, but I think, and I don't even know if the airport board needs to be at that meeting.
Yeah.
But.
Well, as an advisory board, I think it would be important for the airport board to be part of that. It's, it's definitely something, I mean, I'm here doing this because of this.
That's a public comment, right? I hear you.
Yeah. So I mean, if there's any way somebody can look into a special meeting or something, look into it, keep making the steps. Cause I keep asking for something to happen, some sort of a town hall meeting and I'm not getting any kind of, nobody's going for it yet and it's frustrating. And if you guys haven't even had lithium mine come and talk to you guys for the airport board, what is going on that it's so hush, hush? But yet, city council members have been notified and had all sorts of stuff going on for years.
I'm not sure who you think the city councilmen are. And I'm sorry, I'm gonna eject right now. Lithium, when they came to our meeting, that was the first time and I've been on the board for eight years.
Well, how many, how many people have been going to the lithium, you know, ribbon cuttings and all that stuff and having personal meetings with them?
However, I'm just saying.
I mean, you have a board member who is employed by lithium mine.
Yeah, listen to what he's saying.
Just got elected one, two, all we've done is make presentations by their mine site, not the transfer station ever. I think a public meeting, a town hall meeting, but as far as a joint meeting or them coming here is not the forum for them to have a question and answer. I, I can't speak for lithium because I have no idea who you talk to, but as far as the joint meeting, I'm opposed to that. I think they can come to this meeting and talk as a good neighbor, but I don't even actually think the airport can say, I mean, we're just an advisory board for the city council.
So when did the Plan one six three get sent out?
That's, it's a couple of years ago. So the, maybe I can clarify some confusion about the property.
It's been hard to figure out what's been going on.
So what, to start with, Lithium Nevada, when they made their presentation to the city council a month ago or whenever it was, they asked the city council to consider selling or leasing the western parcel that the city owns, which is not airport property. It's unrestricted.
But it's airport industrial district.
It's zoned airport industrial district. But it doesn't, it's not part of the, the part of the airport that's restricted for airport development. So that's this parcel over here, it's unrestricted.
But it's, all the planning so far is going into that other parcel also.
There are two, these stair steps. There's a piece of rail that cuts off, I believe, this corner and I believe this corner. And so it cuts off a really tiny amount, a sliver of these two stairs.
So if we keep cutting it off by a tiny amount, is it okay with every tiny amount until it's more?
That's what we're asking the FAA about because it does not affect airport development.
Why, why has all this gone in front of the FAA without being brought to the public's knowledge?
Because they're just reviewing to see if it's even possible. And, and so these two little corners, it doesn't restrict airport development or anything like that, but it would be very nice to have the FAA's blessing and the FAA to agree that it does not affect airfield development.
So is the FAA and the Plan one six three, is there even anything about the sulfur transloading in there?
The FAA has also been in contact with Lithium Nevada and they, they know, the Lithium Nevada knows the FAA's restrictions and the FAA knows, has a site plan of the proposed plan.
And does the railroad know about the spur right next to the airport road crossing?
Yes, yes.
And is that, is that approved by them?
I have not received the, any determination on the Section one sixty-three review. But the railroad crossing at airport road is actually N dot. That's under N dot's control.
So if they put a spur right there and they're transferring the cars onto the spur because the way the trains have to pull up and back in, how long will they be blocking that road for traffic?
I do not know. Those types of details are not for.
Yeah, cause there are a lot.
There's a lot of details that have not been gone through. And this is where, again, I say, you're doing the beginning stages, you need to bring the community in on it. I mean, having all of this.
They're not doing anything on it.
I, well, you have your airport manager right here that's been doing all this stuff.
She's also the city manager.
Well, where do her priorities lie?
Well, I think we've discussed this in the past, we've had discussions about, about this in the past and, and these meetings are all public notice. So I don't know, I mean, we don't advertise on the radio that the airport court's having a meeting because it's, it wouldn't make any difference. It's not very well attended. But, but nonetheless, the, the meetings are, are public noticed. I don't know what, what else.
Well, basically what happens is every time you go to a meeting, we get a little more information on what's really going on.
Sure.
Because like she said, there's no communication with the public. And so she's been going to all the meetings trying to find out what's really going on. And like, like she said, so they filed the one sixty-three two years ago and she just wanted, well, I think the public wasn't notified of what's going on before it's pushed because once you get something like this in, there's no turning back. And, and if it turns out to be catastrophic, you'll lose your runway, your big one, your big planes can't fly out due fires and stuff like that. Because if you look at the, it's not called M S D S anymore, but they have a new name for it, it changed about two years ago. And if you looked, looked that up on these chemicals, it falls under, you're not supposed to have by an airport. Because a fertilizer plant put around airport is for ansel and it's for loading your crop dusters. And that's why you have that, they say fertilizer plant, because that's what it's for. Cause you know what ansel is? It's your fire retard. And that's what, that's why it falls under a fertilizer plant because, or distribution is what it is. So they bring the trucks in to load the planes for your fires.
That piece of property was given to the city of Winnemucca for the airport by the B L M. So all of that stuff, everything around the airport, the whole purpose of the zoning is to make sure that, that the airport is protected with compatible uses. They don't want incompatible uses, right? Well, the problem is the second you start doing a road and a railroad onto that other parcel, you're going into incompatible uses. And every time you start just pushing more and more, that, that runway already is at its minimum for its protection zone. And I just, I assumed as somebody living here, that if something big was gonna happen, they'll let us know. But that's not happened. And this is serious stuff. We live half a mile away. We're one of the closest houses to this.
We almost live at the, just cross the tracks at the end of the runway. And if I would've known, known that when I put my house in, I would've moved it over because those planes actually have to veer to miss my house. And I didn't know that at the time.
And honestly, we like living near the airport. We totally support the airport. I am, those tankers, when they're going by and they're fighting fires and everything, I'm proud. They are loud and they are low, but it doesn't matter. I am proud of what they're doing and I'm proud of our airport. This sulfur thing is disgusting. This and how nobody knows anything still, it's, it's just not ethically, morally right how it still has not gotten out to the public.
So has anybody been at the airport when you watch those crop dusters take off? Y'all see how low they come by our house? Because they're, they're so heavy.
Restrictions on stuff.
Carrying that load. And that's one of the biggest concerns because most of your traffic goes that way. And if that end of the runway is compromised, then it's gonna be hard to get like planes in and out that you need.
There's so many concerns about this. I mean, I've been researching other airports and small airports and whatnot in Nevada and we probably have some of the worst zoning written out to protect our airport. It's, it's not up to par with what these other airports have.
Well, the board's not gonna go into that tonight, but we're gonna have to wait till we get our, listen to the, to the presentation when lithium comes and we'll just have to go from there. I know there's been, they met with this council, they met with the county commissioners, I don't know where else they're gonna be meeting with the public, but.
So, so the meeting in March will be a public meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess we'll help get the word out.
It's gonna be the best we can.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
The district.
Yeah, we appreciate, appreciate your time and, and all information you give us.
What would the steps be to go about making a town meeting, our community meeting where this is, I mean, the only thing.
They go to the county commissioner meeting?
Well.
Where you can go to the news media and.
I'm, I'm just saying, so information can get out, that's what she's asking is, I know that there's a lot of people on Rose Creek Road. I have property down there. I've been waiting, building my house because I'm not sure what's going on with this or if that's still a place that will be a good place to live. I'm not sure as somebody with the airport with what Hal Phillips has said with the one mile radius, if there was a spill of the sulfur, if that's a beneficial thing to the airport because I don't think it is. I'm positive one four is in that mile radius. So our main runway would be shut down. These are, I'm not one hundred percent sure what's going on. I've heard there's gonna be boilers with steam next to the approach end of one four and I can't see how that would be a good thing on our main runway. But that's my point is it's hearsay. We haven't really been told a lot and I mean, somebody who lives on Rose Creek Road, I know a bunch of people on Rose Creek Road, they have no idea what's going on either. And so I think that that's kind of where Christina's coming from, is just trying to figure out information instead of hearsay and having to do research that, I mean, these things should be talked about and discussed. I mean, cause there were other options from what I remember when we were talking about this. And if the one sixty-three doesn't go through, I mean, what's the alternative to this? Might that be a better solution, not necessarily for Lithium Nevada, but for the Humboldt County residents? I don't know, but that's kind of where, what would the, how would you do that? I mean, how would you get a community meeting? Would it just be something that the community would have to arrange or is it something that can be put out? Cause a lot of times, city council meetings are two o'clock on a workday. You're not gonna get all the people, even for, I mean, the airport board meeting, I know is better for most people, but for me, I, I'm normally at work at this time. Somebody else has to come in or the airport's left unattended at four o'clock. And so possibly doing one more in the evening time so that people who do work can be there as a possible idea or a different way to get the message out about what's going on over there. I'm not sure. I mean, and I think that that's where her frustration is, is not being able to get the information and not feeling like there's an outlet to be able to do that.
I can, I can do my best to encourage Lithium Nevada to also participate in some sort of community meeting. I can't promise that it will happen because I don't know, but.
And the other thing that I think is that, there was a process and we were all here a month ago. I think the reason lithium hasn't come with more, is there was a process, is the property available? How much is it? How much is it?
That isn't determined.
And those haven't been determined. So I don't know if lithium wants to come out and say, this is what we have, because they don't know what we have. We don't, they don't know what we have until we move forward in that process. And I believe lithium actually said at that meeting, as we move forward, we'll be able to put special, different people on it with different ideas on what it's gonna look like. But that, I'm sure they just wanna wait and see what's gonna happen with the property before they move forward on it. Cause there is no property appraiser, appraisal yet. It's not done, it's not, there's nothing left available to know if it's gonna work. So I think till that goes, I'm sure lithium's gonna say, we need to see if it's gonna work for us out there.
Now, I mean, and I understand that, but I also, before you can move forward, I mean, they should have a concrete idea of what that's going to look like because it is possible that it will affect the airport. It's possible it will affect our major Cal-Win runway, one four. It's, it's right there. And it will definitely impact, I mean, us on airport road over there, the traffic. We don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the plans for the infrastructure. The amount of traffic has varied from what we were told. I mean, I have some documents that they gave out at Orvada a year ago versus what they're saying now. And so there's going to definitely be an impact over there. But for the airport board, there's going to be an impact to the airports. It might be minimal, it might be a lot. It just kind of depends on what that's looking like. And I guess that that's where, without being able to pin them down on what it looks like, how can we, I mean, how can you guys advise what's best for the airport if it's going to be something that affects that runway when we don't know? We just have no idea what it's looking like. As far as what their actual operations, I know just putting a railroad, I, that really shouldn't impact much, but what the actual facility will be doing and what the possible impacts on the airport, I mean, having a new safety protocol, if there is a spill, what does that look like? And being able to kind of have a plan, you know, B L M is super close to one four, does that shut down their operation at that time? We don't know. And it's a possibility that has to be looked at before, and I know that the airport board doesn't say yay or nay, but it's still informational and being able to, hey, look at this, will it negatively impact the airport? And being able to say that, or, you know, it should have minimal impact on the airport.
I think that's what the purpose of the meeting in March was for. They're going to come and, and explain that, how it may or may not affect the airport.
We'll see how different their presentation is compared to the, they had one at city council, they had one at county commissioner. So they're gonna do the airport board.
Well, they've been in three, at least three meetings since then, okay? And what they're doing is going around and having meetings with two or three people at a time. Now, the reason I proposed what I did is that there's just too many, what are you gonna do with a hundred and fifty rail cars? Where are you gonna park them? I mean, and how's that gonna affect us? I mean, this, this whole thing is, and Thibault Piquet said, said it best, is that we're not interested in going out here and saying, lithium, you can't do this, but not here. That's what we're saying, not here. Now, you guys put in sewer plant a few years back and you alleviated a lot of the smell that we had in spring and fall when they all turned over. And you could smell that all the way through town. I didn't care where you were at in town. And it's the same thing with, with the pond out there at the Pave Farm. It turns over, it makes, you know? So what you did for the community is a great thing. You've gone out there, you've put all of this in one, one place and doing modern work on it and, and make it work. The sulfur itself, there's no way to keep that smell out here. I, I don't care what lithium tells you, I can back that up with scientific stuff that we've already researched. And so all we're asking is not to have it near Winnemucca. And we've got hundreds of thousands of acres out there. They've got, you know, one in particular is down at the end of Jungle Road. And the reason that, that people aren't, aren't looking at, you know, well, lithium says this and lithium says that, if we allow lithium to come in here, they come in here for nothing. They don't have, we've got water available, we've got power available and we've got a taxpayers' road from the rate, from the airport all the way to Orvada that we're gonna have to pay for. And they're gonna put the heavy trucks on there now, you know? And then the state has even come in and they said, well, look, we're gonna give these guys millions of dollars in tax incentives, bring this stuff in here. We're not gonna get anything out of it. City's not gonna get anything out of it, the county's not gonna get anything out of it for years. And so if we do cause our own problems by putting it this close to town, how are we gonna fix anything if we don't? how are we gonna fix anything if we don't have any money to do it? And, and I think that's the biggest deal all the way through with the public. And that's one of the reasons I brought it up tonight. Because we're being blamed for it. This board here is the airport board. They don't understand that we're advisory only. And so, we're being blamed in the public for it. And I've had many discussions with the public saying, no. You know, all we are is an advisory board. But we all need, all of Winnemucca, not just the airport board, or the city council or, or county commission. We need to look at this thing at a different light. Because we live in Winnemucca because we wanna be here. We like Winnemucca and it's a great place to live. Why would we wanna bring something this dangerous in here and interrupt that good life we have? So, uh, and that's what the people are saying. And so, the more we can get out in the, in the public to explain to them, and maybe it will be okay with some of them. You know, but for right now, and it isn't only, only Rose Creek that's gonna get infected, affected by it. You know, you could take, you know, look where those ponds were and how much is affected. I mean, I live less than a half a mile from here. And when the pond turns over, you didn't want to go outside out here. And it's miles away from us. And so, and I've done the research into the, into the, the, and done it scientifically. I've got scientists from out, throughout the western states that have put in on this as, as what it's gonna do. And, uh, once they take the sulfur out of our gas and their diesel, they've got it in piles, well, they injected into that the gas. That's what they were getting out of the sulfur so that we weren't burning this gas. And so, they've got it collected, but it's in the sulfur that they're gonna bring down here. So now it's gonna separate when they move it. So, you know, I asked them, I said, what, what's gonna happen? Well, we've got vents on, on the trains, on the cars, and they'll just vent. And one of the others asked and said, well, where's it vented? He said, I don't know. And it's a highly poisonous gas. I mean, it's one of the worst ones in the world. So, you know, all of that is gonna encapsulate and, you know, they need to, and they've never done, they, they've never recovered lithium with sulfuric acid. They've always used water. And they're doing it throughout. If you go down, I, I happen to go to Fallon for the Central Water Authority. And what's happening down south, they're just pumping water out there and making lakes. Floating this lithium and then taking it out. Now they wanna inject the water back into it. I don't know what that's gonna do to, you know, all of our water, because it's all, you know, interreaction. You can take water from Orvada, they've, they've dyed it, and it ends up in, uh, yeah, the lake down there by Fernley, uh, here, man. So, you know, there's a lot more to this and, and we have, and, and all we're getting is a sales pitch on this stuff and we don't have anything else backing it. City hasn't looked into it. NDP just rubber stamped it. Uh, so we need to, as a community, we need to protect ourselves.
I think it'll be a good meeting. I appreciate that they're coming.
What's that, Mike?
I appreciate that they're coming to the next meeting.
Yes.
So.
But the reason I suggested it the way we did is that we need questions. I, I mean, we've got questions out there. I can put, you know, ten pages of questions for them.
And I think we should all, if we have questions, we should direct them to Alicia.
Anybody who has questions, you can send them to me and I will send them on.
They already have those questions, so.
So we just need to present them again at the meeting when they should.
I mean, they're, they're gonna be at this meeting. We can't ask them questions at the meeting?
Yes, you can, yeah.
Yeah, we can ask some questions.
So, I mean, that's what this airport board could do. I mean, and your, yours was a bigger question. Um, more like Christina's on a, more of a community meeting.
And, and we already, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we already did a meeting here. And it's not big enough. We had people, there was barely breathing room in here, am I correct?
Yes.
And they went out in, you know, so it's not a, a large enough area
Right.
to have this meeting. And that's what she's bringing up here. Is that we do have to, we do need to give it out to the public. And, you know, we need a bigger area to do it. I don't have funds personally to go out there anymore than she does to go out there and rent a thousand dollar room for it. So, uh, maybe you could look into that too for us. And I'll suggest it again to the county commission that we find some area, you know, that we can go into, that we can get the people to come out here.
And a lunch center or something.
Yeah.
That's why I've been asking. I, I've been getting put off. Well, Lithium Nevada will set something, no. We need to do this as a community. This is, I like, I'm honestly surprised that Lithium Nevada didn't come to the airport board first since you guys were advisory before they went to the city.
Well, it's, we're an advisory board. We're just airport operations. So, we would be down on the agenda a little bit, because we don't approve anything. We just recommend. That's one reason.
Well, we have less to do with the industrial part.
Yeah.
With the, the airport proper. But nonetheless, it's still of interest. And so they're coming to this meeting in a month. Uh, and you're welcome to come. And I guess anybody else is welcome to do it. It's a public meeting.
But I see, you're trying to get a town hall meeting.
I'm trying to get something bigger, yeah.
Right, right.
Because I can, I can pack this room to where you guys don't have enough room in the building. That's not a problem. What I'm saying is, if you're gonna do something, do it right so that people can actually come.
You'd have to get a town hall meeting, like, go to the mayor and ask him, or the, go to the county commissioner and get on the agenda. Can we have a town hall meeting about the lithium thing?
But until they do it, my only option is to pack the rooms. So that's what's gonna keep happening. When it, when it's on the agenda and Lithium Nevada is coming to talk, which by the way, their information they're giving out is constantly getting outdated. Because they met with the city council January 10th and already, a lot of what they said is outdated. Their plans are bigger and more and more already.
This sounds like it's a much larger problem than an airport advisory board's going to handle.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm just going everywhere I can to try to get help at this point.
Or to county commissioners. We are the wrong people to spearhead this.
Yeah, but they're right. It's getting together and it's happened now means like, we can get with, we should go get with Alicia.
She's not arguing the fact that we can't do anything with it.
Yeah.
Okay? What she's trying to bring to attention, and she's done it very well without screaming and hollering and different stuff, that's what I'm trying to bring to the attention of Winnemucca, not just this board, not just the city, not just the county, but all of Winnemucca, what's happening. And so, let's just chalk it up as some learning. And, you know, if you wanna bring Lithium in to the board, bring it in. And I'm sure that the public will show up here with questions. Um, if we could get into a bigger venue, I think it'd be better for all of us. So. Thank you for listening, so. Is that good with you?
Yeah, I just, yeah, trying to get it out there.
He doesn't try to put anything on the airport board per se.
Yeah.
You know, because of where.
Well, we just need to. We need to be private on what's going on.
Regulations obviously.
You know, not just the airport. Well, there's, I mean, Natasha mentioned there's issues with the airport.
Yeah.
And that's what we deal with. And, and certainly there's community issues, but we would deal with community issues as they related to operations from the airport.
Well, you guys earlier in the meeting were talking about, you know, being on the good side of FAA and wanting to get funding.
Oh, we get funded.
How many more complaints and everything? I've been in contact with the FAA. If you have a whole bunch of community members contacting them and complaining, is that gonna look good on you guys? Forgetting your funding.
Complaining about what? What do we complain about?
Well.
You mean an individual complaining about?
About, about trying to put in the sulfur transloading terminal.
We're not, we're not putting that in.
We're not, we'd have, we don't have anything to do with putting that in. The airport board. She's the city manager. She's the airport board manager.
Mm-hmm.
She's dual-headed, but she's not, it's not for the airport.
And I've had a meeting with Alicia Heiser and she's, yeah, she's informing of things that did not add up. So, yeah, I come in here a little bit more like, because to me, she's a part of this.
Well, I, the, the best thing to do is, is to come to the meeting in March and.
Bring your firm's package so they understand that there is a problem for sure. And that's good.
And the, the commission meetings and the city council.
I'm, I'm showing up to all of them. I'm trying to get it out there.
The city council and the commission have more pull than, than the airport board does.
I, I just want you guys to know that I do respect your opinion as the airport board. And I, like I said, we're neighbors of the airport and we fully support everything that they've been doing. And I wanna see the airport succeed and keep going the way it's been going, not in this direction.
Yeah. And there, there's probably legitimate questions from this board and others about to Lithium Nevada about how their operation would affect the airport. And that would be our concern.
And we have consultants that keep us on the right track and they advise us. And they, they're in contact with the FAA and the airport managers in contact with the FAA. So, whatever, there's transparency in this board, I can guarantee it. That being said, it's getting late. Anybody have anything else for the, for the benefit of the board? If not? So, be it.
I think everybody has to go out the back door. I think the front is blocked. Well, if the door's not locked, then customers come in and try to make payment. There's no way there.
Hey, you're right.
Yeah.
For twisting off my tailwheel, right? You machined that, that, that part off.
So, if you have a problem with your little beacon,
Mm-hmm.
I have a machine big enough to make your parts.